I was a really quick at.
A lot of meetings.
The call to meeting to order, please stand up and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show that all board members are present except Chad Young and Eric Minks. And we will move on to the student showcase. And Charlie, are you gonna start us out?
Yeah, I'll give a quick introduction if that's okay and turn it over to them very quickly. Well, first of all, thank you for having us and for giving us a chance to feature. I'm gonna let our students do most of the talking here as they've done some amazing work in this school. We have a lot planned for this year and the number one thing that we want to make sure with the year is that we start off with a strong climate and culture for learning. And the work that the students have done really comes from a guest we were fortunate enough to have in our school, Reggie Dabs. And some of the things that our students have run with since he came and made an impact. And they are doing a whole bunch of things to keep it going. And so we're really proud of our three students that we have here today. We have Allison Kaiser, Michaela Brown, and Adeline Schwartz. And you'll see in some of the things they're sharing, there's a lot of other students who we're really proud of, who are involved with work. It was a web day today, so we've got our web stuff on. And so a lot of our different student leaderships between student council and web are making a big difference. So with that, I'll turn things over. Come on up, girls, you ready? And if the presentation can go and then when you're done with the slide, girls, you can just say click or next slide. And it should get switched.
See, Emily, do you have access to the presentation?
Yeah, I'll open it up in just a sec here.
Share it on the screen?
Yes.
So she's gonna be getting that pulled up. Is there anything you want to say beforehand or you want to wait?
Can you tell us who you are?
I'm Allison.
I'm Addie.
I'm Michaela.
Could you tell me your last names again, please?
Allison Kaiser.
Okay.
Adeline Schwartz.
Michaela Brown.
All right, now we need a full bio. What's your favorite color? What grade are you in? What's your favorite subject?
Ooh, grades would be good.
I'm seventh grade.
Seven, seven.
All right.
Thank you.
Awesome. Well, we're happy to have you. There is your presentation. And you can see it on the screen too. And then Emily's like, she's somewhere else, but you just spelled her when you wanted to change the screen.
Making our school a better place by Allison, Michaela, and Addie. Next. Our school is doing the 10 for 10 challenge. The 10 for 10 is a challenge that Reggie Dabs challenged student council and web to share with our school. 10 for 10 is a 10 day challenge where you challenge yourself to 10 different acts of kindness to 10 different people. Next. Next. Here is a video we made with some other students explaining more about the 10 for 10. There's sound to it.
Did you guys hear that audio at all?
No.
Aw, that's bad. It was really great. Always remember to be kind. Um, I guess we'll skip the other one, but I'm gonna mute again because I've got a four-year-old.
Next. I hear it.
Oh, you're watching it too?
We can watch it on our.
We have it on our computer, too. I couldn't even look to it when I tried.
You can hit play at the same time. Put the speaker on it.
Yes, let's do that. Emily, we're gonna try something. Let's, when I say.
Hold on, I'll get the first one up. You got the second one, honey. I got the second. Teamwork.
We're gonna do the first one, Emily.
Okay.
So click the first one right now.
We're 13th to the 31st.
Do a challenge, where are you? I'm trying to do random acts of kindness. Whether it's picking someone's stuff up there or something. Or just be polite. Always remember to be kind.
Please participate in the 10 for 10 challenge. Always remember to be kind.
All right, we need to do better this one.
It was faster than this.
Okay, we're gonna do the second one.
All right, this one's not done.
Okay, just get a positive. Go. All right. Next slide, Emily.
So you think you know Wix, do you really?
Student council made posters explaining a little bit about the 10 for 10 challenge. We took other pictures of other posters that we saw having kindness. Want to post this one? Oh, uh, no. Ice cream for sale. So ice cream is for sale every Friday at lunch. So student council is involved in this. This is one thing we do to help raise money for our school, to like get new things and make it a more fun place. Next. This is why we love to help our school. It makes an impact on other students and then it becomes a reality. Next. Thank you for letting us present to you. Thank you.
Do you want to ask some questions? Have you noticed an impact, a difference? Are people being nicer to each other?
They're trying.
Yeah?
It started on last Friday.
Okay.
Was the kindness, like all the nice words you guys wrote in chalk out on the sidewalks, was that part of this or is that something else?
It's like any kind of kindness, like helping somebody on the staff or opening the door.
I saw the poster of the custodians.
Yeah.
Out in the lunchroom.
Yeah.
That gave me a good laugh. That's funny. You said something really cool when we were talking about what do you want to see come out of this? I think there were some really good answers to that. Maybe if you could share what you hope lasts out of this through all the effort that you put into this.
We, so our answer to that was like, we were like hoping that it wouldn't like, it would just become a reality because they get so used to it. And then like other schools can look at our school and like do like, see that our school is making an impact of being like kind and more kind.
That's awesome. Any other questions from the board?
No, this is awesome. Way to go, girls.
You know, it's funny because I just had a meeting today with all the principals and administrators in the district. And we talked a lot about this, about all the work that we really, we try and implement different procedures in different ways so that our students feel, all of our students feel like they're safe and they're respected and like they belong, right? A place that's free of any kind of discrimination and hate and evil. And it's challenging, right? Because when you look outside into the world, right, there's a, there's a lot of conflict. And what we're trying to do as our, as our students, to help change, really. Because the world needs help in a lot of different ways and it really got to start somewhere. So thank you in a model for not only our school and our community and so keep it up.
No pressure.
And just two cents on, my two cents on these three. Tonight was a good representation of how they roll with things. You know, the audio wasn't working tonight and you still got your message out. And I think the last couple of days, there were some adjustments you were making. You were putting in that extra work. Some of the kids were on their lunches. They were shutting the door, kind of concentrating on this kind of thing. And I think the thing that I appreciated hearing from Mr. Dabs talked about, you know, his background where he found out at a very young age that he had been given up by his mother and that she kept his siblings and didn't want him. And that was really, the day he learned it, what school was like. And you could hear, we went from, girls, do you remember, he was kind of making us all laugh and then all of a sudden just dead silence when he talked about that. And to see the kids react to that and want to do something with the idea that we're kind because we never know who else is going through something like that. And to see that natural reaction, the kids were incredible in responding to that. So I'm just, I'm really proud of these three and our school. And they are three that we're gonna be leaning on heavily through the next several days. And it's gonna ramp up as we go.
Yeah, thank you so much. There are no citizens comments. And so we'll move on to board member committee reports, starting with Debbie. Um, I had no committee meetings, but I was at the health fair this afternoon, so. Don, we have policy tonight. I went to the variety show at the high school. And then conferences at the high school last night.
I also have policy. I also went to the variety show, which was fabulous. I'm glad they're doing another one. And I was also, so I was at the homecoming game and that was really nice. Like it's just all these great, see all the kids like dressed up and it was, it was a really good time.
Um, I had agenda planning this week and I didn't braid the rain for homecoming, but I did watch it. That counts, that counts. Okay. Eric.
I had activities committee meeting this afternoon. And last night I attended the Positive Coaching Alliance meeting for parents. And that was it.
How was that?
It was good. I think there was like 2, 250 people.
Sorry, awesome. And did they, was it the same presenter or a different presenter?
It was the same presenter, um, kind of the same material, but more geared towards parents.
Okay.
I, I really liked it. I like all those meetings.
Did they, did they record that by chance?
Yes.
Did they?
No.
Did them?
I was told that they did.
I don't think they recorded it, but I think that they're going to have it for the spring sports and then for the fall sports as well.
Okay. All right, okay. Student council report and we have Lena tonight.
Yes, Ellie is across country, so best of luck to her. But so on last Friday in student council, we got new members in. So last meeting was the members' first official meeting for the new members. We welcomed them and we played a new game. Fuller and McGathie attended a conference, um, just kind of for advisors for student council. Kind of like get some more input from different advisors from different schools and advice. And so one of the things was more like bonding. And so we worked on a lot of bonding stuff on last Friday's meeting. So we did some games to like get to know each other and like we did like a big group activity as well. And then I know Ellie might have briefed it a little bit at last meeting, but Operation Smile is my new club that I brought to Princeton High School. And so basically the purpose is to make goodie bags and raise money and that kind of thing for kids that need to go undergo like club pallor reconstruction. Um, the first meeting's still kind of unknown, um, because it's kind of now NHS has started up. So those meetings are Thursdays and then there's Try M and Leo Club and E Club and all that kind of thing in student council. So we're working around it, but as of right now, our first official meeting is looking like Thursday, the 26th at 8:00 a.m. in Jacob's Room. And then we also are doing a few questions still from the school, the student body about when the bathroom is gonna be done. There have been quite a few complaints about it as people have tripped over the construction many times this last couple of weeks because they're just, and they're stuffed. So people are just wondering about that, so. Because I know the last time we asked about it, they were supposed to be done end of September, beginning of October, so.
Michelle.
How great it is tomorrow.
The ones on the bottom floor and there's construction dust taken care of.
The ones upstairs are getting there. I know that. We walked past them today and they're just installed in the toilet space today. So fingers crossed they're done when we come back so that.
Busy going in and out.
Yes. And then, oh, we kind of, you know, there's a question that we could bring up next student council meeting that I'll bring up to Fuller. A different month though, where we have an every month kind of thing. Where to park at.
We invited a member from the Department of Ed, who is kind of an expert in that area to join us. And we're just trying to find that, those missing ingredients in our climate and culture plan. We're grounded in positive behavior interventions and supports. We have the Princeton paradigm where we, or the habits of attire with lots of emotional standards built in. But we still. I'm excited. We also. Said I do not speak English. And it's a tool for us to be able to give our teachers, our nurses, our counselors, an opportunity. Emails and their courses translated. And also if we need, we will have that person on standby. So we're just constantly trying to evolve in that area. We have. If you ever go to our homepage. But you click on Spanish, Mong and Roman as well. So, um, and that's all part of our action plan as it relates to. I know that the nurses in the wellness committee worked hard on that. I always wish we'd have a better turnout. I do want you to know, for them to know that we. We might not think of all, but the acuity of the needs of some of our students and the. Portion of nursing support to the student body needs. We still want to put on that, so I'll keep you posted. We had a great meeting with our transportation workers last week. This already, we did have a change. Transition, I guess, from my perspective. And I also had an opportunity meeting with the owner of Palmer last week. You know, they're full steam ahead of building a new bus barn. And we also know that we have negotiations for a new transportation contract on the horizon. A lot of transparency and discussions about the inflationary costs associated with transportation. Unemployment. But all things that we think consider, we need. Service so. Pretty to the rules that they would be bound by. It's more, yeah, it's more like our paraprofessionals. And so, yeah, it's similar to that. So if they were to offer up a position to one of the drivers and they refuse, then they're not eligible for those unemployment benefits. Example last, for quarter three for us, our unemployment cost was $122,000. So they'll see a significant increase.
Thank you.
As well, I want the group to know that our public. Finalizing or we're making some traction on a legislative platform that we can move forward to the entire board to review. We're working on this to all households in the district as well. And several other items in that action plan. So I think I'll just close my remarks and my remarks unless anyone has any additional questions.
All right. Thank you, Superintendent. We'll move on to approving the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? So moved. Motion made by Melissa. Melissa, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Don, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries. We'll discuss an act on previous board meeting minutes from 10:03. Is there a motion to approve the meeting minutes?
So moved.
Motion made by Don, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Deb, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. We'll move on to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion made by Melissa, second by Eric, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries. So now we will move on to the information section of the meeting and the health insurance is the first part and I have to connect to Jason.
All right. Michelle, I know you did a great job of explaining the bids that we received back in September regarding our health insurance. We had six different bids from different companies. We met with our units, so our custodians, our secretaries, our paraprofessionals, admin and teaching staff as a committee. And reviewed each of those six proposals. It really came down to two of the proposals, the current, which we have at Sourcewell. They had a 5.6% increase in year one and then a 14.9 cap in year two. The other option was Blue Cross Blue Shield, who came in with a 5.4% the first year and then a 14.5 cap the second year. After discussion with the committee, it was decided to stay with our current vendor as the half a percent wasn't worth the additional paperwork and all of the new processes that would have to come into play. And so the recommendation from the committee is to stay with Sourcewell. We also have an option with Sourcewell where if we, that the committee's gonna be looking at some SMART plans in year two, which would have a cap of 10%. The SMART plans, the issue that we run into is that if we go to something like that, then the insurance company is actually setting those deductibles instead of us saying we have these four policies. Search these plans. So there's, there's some risk and some reward. They can match us, which they probably will do the first year. And then after that, if you stay on those SMART plans, more than likely, they will adjust. more than likely, they will adjust based on our claims. So something to keep an eye on. So again, any questions regarding the six proposals or the recommendation from the committee?
And we're going to be asking the board to vote on this later on.
All right. Then we'll move to 10B, the school start time discussion.
So I've alluded to the board in the past that this is something that has crossed my desk multiple times in different inquiries from different stakeholders regarding if we would ever consider changing or modifying our start times within the district with our two-tiered busing system. As you recall, historically, prior to the pandemic, we had a one-tiered system. We all served at the same time. We had talked quite a bit many years about the idea of tiered busing. And we just weren't ever to a point to go there. When the pandemic happened, we had occupancy issues on buses, required us to move to that. And it worked quite well. And we continued on with that. And honestly, it would be very, very difficult if we ever, if we ever chose to go back to one-tiered system just because of mostly the shortage of drivers. And also when we had a one-tiered system, our length of bus drive routes was much longer. Our buses were fuller. And we also had the differences in the developmental stages of having older high schoolers with their young five, six, seven-year-olds. So there's been a lot of positives to it, but there's some negatives too. Right? And when we analyzed, you know, who should start first, there's pros and cons on both sides of the issue. And really, we had the ultimate variable that was the determining factor was sleep studies for adolescents, which really focuses on some of our middle school and high school students needing more sleep. Right? And that's kind of the direction we went. One of the biggest challenges to the system that we have now is the number of early releases that our middle school and high school students need to have for some of their athletic and activity events, which require them to miss seven period more than we would like. And it also requires some of our teachers that teach later to leave as well, leaving those courses with substitutes, sometimes in very highly rigorous academic courses, which of course makes things challenging. Again, pros and cons around the whole thing. I had made the commitment to the folks that reached out to me last year that I would, you know, let the board know that this is being questioned. And really, me having this on the agenda tonight is I would like your blessing, if you will, or direction for us to create a task force made up of 10 to 12 representatives of the community, trying to get a nice cross-section of elementary-age parents, high school-age parents, teachers that coach, teachers that don't coach, students, you know, and have that task force bring a, you know, analyze this whole thing, analyze the research, analyze the data, dig into it, and bring forward a recommendation to the board. Full well-knowing, there could be a lot of work done and they could come back and say, we think we just need to stay the same. Right? But I guess that's what I'm asking for. Because I'd like, I think it'd be more meaningful if I would say the board, the board is directing, or, you know, the board wants to have a task force. The board committee, a board task force, ad hoc committee, at the direction of the school. Because it's not just the superintendent, it's superintendent and board.
I definitely think that that is a very smart thing too, getting a well-rounded variety of community members that it affects and researching whether it's better to leave it or better to change.
Okay. Well, I'm going to take that as your blessing and we're going to move forward. And we do have a writing kind of in the hopper for us to add to my next Tiger Times. And I think we would have that, I have something in our community mailer as well on that. And then we would start that work.
What is going to be your kind of timeframe for this? Are you looking, if we do something, will it be for next school year? Or?
Well, it doesn't have to be.
Or it would be a couple of years off of the action.
I would say it's, it's something that we could turn around as quickly as have that changed for next year. But it's something that, that the group works and maybe they're not ready to make the recommendation and want more time in the summer. And so that would be, it's a change that would be the following year. I mean, there's not a sense of urgency that we have to do it now. But I feel like there's a sense of urgency that we, we need to fulfill a commitment to our community to analyze it fully and do a study of it to see. I would say that our principals and everyone's making their schedules for next year in April and May. In a perfect world, if we were going to make any decisions for next year, we would, we would have some decisions at the board table no later than May. So we'll see. Okay. We'll keep you posted on that.
Is there any way we could go to the action and get the Bonia thing done so they can leave? I'm sure they don't want to sit through our facilities discussion for the next hour.
Well, yeah, we could do that.
I mean, it's up to Sue, I guess.
Yeah, we can do that.
It makes more sense to me, I guess.
Well, I think we'll probably be here for the facility discussion because we have some tax impact information for you.
Okay.
So, yeah, but either way, it's fine.
I was just trying to help you out.
Yeah. Yeah, whatever you guys think, but we'll probably stay for that conversation anyway.
Go for it.
All right. Well, then we are headed that direction right now. So we'll move on to 10C, the CTE facilities update.
So just to frame this, everybody needs to know that again, no board vote needs to happen until December if we have a goal to have something on the ballot for April. Okay? So we, today is only October. We still have November and December. And that's hypothetically if the board wants to pursue this. We did set tonight as a time that we would have a longer discussion. And we've asked board members to reflect, think, ask questions ahead of time. And that's what we're here to do. The three documents that I have placed in here, one is that very original presentation. Are people not seeing that?
Yeah.
Okay. The, the original presentation. The second one was the scope of the different projects. And I'll just kind of go through those right now. Please know that, that we could do any kind of, we could do any one of these scenarios, plus we could add other scenarios. We know that the board asked for us to come to you with a state-of-the-art CTE facility and what the cost of that would be. That is $26,202,000. Right? You know that we have a roof that we need to plan for that needs to be replaced at the middle school. You're aware that there's three different kinds of roofs and you see the prices for each of those. I've talked to most of you individually and just shared with you my perspective. And I also forwarded you some questions that was asked about that. And the information I've gotten is that, yes, the roof does need to be done. It's a 20-year roof and the roof now is 23 years old. So it's out of warranty. However, there is nothing that would make us believe that there's, it's in danger of catastrophic failing. Okay? And with yearly maintenance and some cost for some minor repairs, that potentially can be pushed down the line. You also know that with roofs, we have other funding options. For example, the long-term facility maintenance, potentially we could do another bond in, whenever the next one, this last one expires in four years to potentially address that. And you also are aware that we have the option to do roofs in phases. And you don't need to do the entire roof all at once. You could do different wing, you could do one wing, one year, another wing, you know, a couple of years down the road. So you have more flexibility and options with roofs. But it's, it's a huge expensive item that we need to be planning on. The high school boiler, I'm not as confident that we can push that further down the road. That boiler is original with the building and does have some cracks in it. And that's something that we potentially could have a huge sense of urgency that we would have to take care of. I would say that, in my opinion, that boiler should be a higher priority item than the roof. Because not, like I said, as confident that we can push that out. And once that fails, you know, we can't have our students without heat in the dead winter at the high school. The student services renovation, after talking to most of you, you know, we all agreed that that was higher than what we had anticipated. I want to remind everybody that that is kind of worst-case scenario. They indicated that they had to do everything, you know, it could potentially be that. There's a likelihood it would be less than that. One of the biggest reasons we brought that as an option is, you know, that we have space issues at the family center where we felt like if we could relocate the onward program over to that building, that would free up about three classes at the family center for preschool. I have talked to some of you and I feel like there's been a little bit more uncertainty on that topic. Okay? Those, those are the projects that we have numbers prepared for. You'll notice in that next document, that's the next one down. And this is the one that Ellers had prepared for us and it was just done today. So thank you, that was a lot of work. And I know that they, they had to wait until they got the numbers on the bond this morning before they could put that, this document together. Okay? And Jody will be explaining that here in a minute. But maybe, as long as you're here, do you want to just explain to everybody what this document means and how you kind of intersected the tech levy, capital, what is it called, capital?
Capital project.
Capital project levy with the, with the bond levy. Okay? And how those two are married together. We asked them to do one scenario for $30 million and one scenario for $35 million, depending on what the board wanted to do for a scope of the bond project. And then each of those have a $1 million tech levy and a $1.5 million tech levy. And how we came up with that is we calculated what our annual costs are in the district for technology within the district. And we estimated it to be right around $1.5 to $1.75 million. And that's why we kind of stuck with the $1.5. We certainly could do a lesser amount. Okay? So I'll let Jody kind of explain this document.
Yep. So the order that we have it in, this first tax impact shows capital project levy. The maximum term that you have, can have on that is 10 years. There's no debt issued or anything. So this is just a levy that is added and you collect every year just like you would an operating referendum levy. So the tricky part with the capital project levy, and I think, I think some of this information was shared with you too, we don't have quite as much flexibility then with structuring this to fit in and mitigating tax impact like we do with your debt. So your debt structure, we do have flexibility to do our best to, you know, keep that tax impact as low as possible with structuring the payments a little differently. But with a capital project levy, it just is what it is. It's that levy that's on top of your, your existing capital and debt levies. So we're breaking these out separately, but you certainly could combine them into one question. And I think we've talked about that. So there's kind of pros and cons around that strategy too. So the capital project levy, for example, if we look at a $300,000 home, that's about $10 a month. And that is offset by a reduction in some of your existing debt service levies that will be going down after taxes payable in '24. So for taxes payable, taxes payable '25, we do have a drop-down in your existing debt structure. And I'll show you that in a minute. And then the building bonds, with, on $29 million would be $48. So the total would be $58 or about roughly $5 a month for both of those items combined. And then, as mentioned by Ben, we do have.
Jody, would you?
Yep.
Would you say that again? So the $10 per month?
No, annual.
Okay, I thought you said month, I'm sorry.
No, annual, so about $5 a month with both of them together. Yes, okay, yep. So that's how that scenario looks.
So that's like where, like when I looked at this originally, okay? So I, I mean, I was, my eyes are going to $300,000 house as well on this first chart. So I went over to the total cost.
Yep.
Which was $58, is that right? $58 for the year.
Yep.
So I just divided that by 12 months and I got like $4.50 a month or something like that. Is that, is that a good way to do it?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then you're used to seeing our debt plan. Right? So just to kind of show you how this all kind of layers then together. We have the existing debt, your gray bars for your outstanding bonds that you have in place right now. The lease levy, which will be paid off after taxes payable in '25. The potential voter-approved debt, assuming $29 million. And then the capital project levy at $1.5 million is that aqua kind of bar. If you were to move forward with a election in the spring, you'll have payments due on those bonds before you can collect the tax levy. So that dotted line there is what we call capitalized interest. And all school districts who vote in the spring, because it's too late then after the levy is set, have to include money in the bonds to pay that initial interest payment. So that's what we call capitalized interest. We're also including some capitalized interest in 2025, '26 and '27, a little bit, just to keep that tax rate nice and level. So we use it to, as a mechanism for covering costs when we have a timing issue, where you're not able to get that levy on. We also use it to keep your debt service tax rate nice and level. So we do have capitalized interest figured in for a few years related to this bond issue. And then next, we put together the option that shows a total of $35 million really in funds. The $34 million for school building bonds would be received, of course, all upfront. But we have the opportunity to structure that in a little flexible manner. The capital project levy then at $1 million, which has the exact same tax impact as the schedule that we just looked at. The $34 million, as you can see, doesn't move the needle very much really because we again have the opportunity to restructure that or to structure that in a manner to mitigate the tax impact. So these, this option then results in a tax impact of $78 for both components. The next options then, you can see capital project levy at a $1.5 million does change the tax impact quite a bit more than when you change it on the bond amount. So the $300,000 home now goes up to a net impact of $51 annually. The building bonds at $28.5 would be 48. So the tax impact in total then on a $300,000 home would be 99. So that kind of shows you the magnitude of changing that capital project levy by 500,000 and how much it changed the tax impact as compared to then, as you change the building bond amount, you'll see that that doesn't change things quite as much from a tax impact perspective. The next two options then show, or the next, the final option then is the capital project levy at $1.5 million with a building bond at $33.5. And again, that tax impact on a $300,000 home for a capital project levy of $1.5 million is $51. The building bond goes up to $67 annually. The building bond goes up to $67 annually. So again, to increase and get more money under the building bonds, doesn't change the tax impact quite as significantly. The total then for that option is $118 a year. And then finally, we thought it would be helpful to see, at a couple of those different bond scenarios, so kind of the lower amount and then the higher amount, how much you'd have available for project costs. Because again, those dotted lines, the capitalized interest, will be, you'll need to make those payments from bond proceeds. So you'll see with the par amounts at 28.5 and 34 million, the net available for project costs in about the middle of the page there in bold, for 28.5 gives you roughly 26.4 million dollars for project costs. And then on the 34 million, you have about 31.6. So that's what you ought to compare to your project scope estimates that are being calculated by ICS and WOLD. So lots of numbers, lots of information. So just let me know what questions you have related to any of that information, or as questions come up as you're discussing the different options, I'll be happy to answer that too.
So if we were to take that capital project levy off of there, the aqua color, would that like essentially shift everything down on that debt scale?
Yep.
To keep it about even with where we're at right now in our tax rate?
Yeah, we had initially been setting it up, and this was when we very first, before Michelle had an opportunity to take a look at all the types of costs that could be included in a tech levy, we had just simply used a $500,000 tech levy amount to keep everything nice and level. So, so that's kind of what we were, we were targeting, is having a $500,000 capital project or tech levy, and then structuring the building bonds kind of around that. So I think all along, even when we were looking at some options back in August, we had that placeholder of 500,000, and then the tax impact related to the school building bonds was relatively low then under those options.
Because that page two is like the only thing that really concerns me, because when you show that to the tax, the taxpayers, you see 23, 24, below 15%, and then all of a sudden, 25, 26, and on is up there, that is where your mobile comes from.
You're talking about the, the chart one?
Right there.
Yes. And it's really not super dramatic, your tax.
Oh, no. You totally understand.
Yeah, your tax rate isn't, isn't, I mean, relatively speaking, is not high when you compare to other school districts, of course.
They just see that bar go up. Doesn't matter how much it goes up, they just see it go up.
Well, they probably are sensitive to how much it goes up, right? Yeah. Yeah, because at some point it's acceptable, and at some point it's not. And I don't, I think you guys are going to look back on your survey results to see what people had said, because of course, the, the bond referendum elections that were, the one that was held and then the one that was called off for COVID, those tax impacts were significantly more than what is being considered here in, on, in any of these options. So this is much, much, much lower.
That was about 30, I believe, was.
30 a month, I think, yeah.
No, well, yeah, I meant like the overall, it was like 30 million was what people were comfortable with.
Oh, in that survey.
Yeah. But I do know personally, mine were going to be at like 40 a month.
Yeah, so, yeah, it was, those options were much, much, much higher than any of these that are before you tonight.
So, I mean, I'll just, some things I've heard, right, when talking to each board member individually, is I know that each of you are aware that we have many more needs in our district than what we would be able to take care of with this project, okay? We know that our high school is our oldest facility, our most attended facility, and we also have visions of being, educating our students in the 21st century. The career academies is a, is a huge part of us moving that forward. And I think it's a combination of trying to make decisions to have the facilities that we feel our students need, but also being a realist when we do it. And, you know, what, what can our community support and what can't they, right? So we know that there's a, there's a high sensitivity to tax impact. We know that this is the only thing that any voter ever is to vote on, whether or not your taxes go up or not. We know that our economy is in a challenging place and time. The board, after the last failed referendum, directed us to bring back a proposal for you on a phased-in approach, which would take care of what you consider to be the priority item, which is the CTE areas, and that's what we've done. But again, that doesn't mean that we don't have other needs. We just need to communicate to our community and our public that this is a phased-in approach. We acknowledge that the needs are still there. We will go out at a future date. Could be five years from now, could be 10 years from now, I don't know, right? But those other needs are not going away.
And there is some capacity in this long-term plan to address some of those needs in the future, so you'll see that we do have some step downs in the tax rate to be able to address those. And I think, you know, that's important to be able to communicate that too.
What year is our first step down? 35?
Yeah, yeah. Well, 34 has gone a little bit, and then 35 and later. And this, you know, hopefully, we have very conservative assumptions built in like we always do on our plans, and well, you know, this is, see what the growth in the tax base has been at a much higher rate than what we're planning for going forward, so should that stay at a higher level that helps everybody, right? To spread the tax burden out, I know there's some commercial businesses that are, that will be coming on the tax rolls, and all of those kinds of things will help to mitigate this in the future.
Also beginning to re-list the board, we need to acknowledge that we are amongst a, a small percentage of school districts in the state that do not have a voter-approved operating referendum. And it is more challenging than ever to be able to have our expenditures be less than our revenue. And we have significantly dipped into our fund balance every year. This last year, the audit, once we show you audit, you'll see that we had to dip into our fund balance more than our recent previous years. You also know that any of the federal dollars that we received during the pandemic is gone after this year. We've spread that out as long as we could, and we were very intentional in putting those dollars in to keep our class sizes down. That roughly $1.1 million of revenue will be coming out of the books. We also know that we're going through contract negotiations and those kinds of things that will add increases to our expenditures. A tech levy to relieve some of the pressure, in my opinion, would be, is huge.
And that has been, become more and more common for school districts to have tech levies especially allocated toward technology costs, because there isn't a specific funding mechanism for technology costs, and everybody recognizes the fact that that's become a bigger and bigger part of school district budgets. So that is, that used to be a handful of districts that had voter-approved capital project levies in place, and now there's 58, I believe, so, and more on the ballot this
So, Ms. Chair, would you, would you be Madam Chair? So, would, would you feel comfortable, you know, just given the fact that we said that we wanted to spend a good amount of time with this, maybe just allowing each board member to share their perspective, kind of where their heads at, just?
Sure.
So that we can all see where.
I was trying to figure out where my head is at.
So you don't want to go first?
I was looking at that, the, Jody, that very last, I thought you were going to go to the last page? That very last chart about, like, that very last one, that showed, like, what, what would be available for projects?
Correct, yep.
Is that, like, that 31, that's what would be for projects, not the, was not the tech levy added to it? Or is that with the tax?
That is not including the tech levy, this is just the bond on its own. And the tech levy would be annual, and the tech levy is a rate that's applied against your net tax capacity value. So when your value grows, you do get a little bit more each year, right? Or a lot more in the years when your tax base grows significantly. If your tax base declines, you get less. So different than an operating referendum. An operating referendum is driven by your enrollment and changes according to growth or decline in enrollment. The tech levy is a rate that the voters approve, and in the first year, we calculate the rate to ensure that you meet the revenue that you want to receive in the first year, but then after that, you have the ability to collect that amount, whatever you're eligible for, based upon that rate applied toward, against your tax base. So again, Big Lake, for example, has had a capital project levy in place for many, many years, and theirs has grown pretty significantly over the last couple of years with the growth in their tax base. So you do enjoy that benefit as your tax base grows. So it may start out at a million or a million and a half, and then, you know, again, just it grows based upon your final value from the year before, so there's a one-year lag in the increase that you receive in your, in the revenue that you're, that's available to you.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Mm-hmm, yep. So it does not stay static, but it is an annual amount that you receive.
And then after 10 years, do you have to go back?
Correct, and if you want to just simply renew at the same rate, similar to an operating referendum, there's a nice language that the legislature's approved that says you're voting to extend an authority that's scheduled to expire, so you don't have to say you're voting on a tax increase.
Okay, then it has to be.
But it does have to be renewed by the voters. And there's not a board-approved option for renewing that like there is right now for an operating referendum, but it's possible that the legislature will revisit that too.
Does anyone want to start?
I can start.
Okay, Deb.
My head is at the, the first option, which I think would give us the best chance of passing something. So the 29 million for building bonds and the million for the capital project, so that would allow us to do the CTE and the boiler. That's where mine is at. I just feel like.
Deb, it won't give us enough for the boiler, because we got to pay all these other costs.
Oh, because it's 26 million, yep.
Just because of the CTE.
Well, there we go.
But, yeah.
I mean, I, I just think we have to, like, pare this down to as far as we can get. If we really want the CTE to happen, that's what I, I just think we have to.
What about the, the page is it, the, no, it says fourth, the fourth page? That's got the 1.5 for the capital project levy and 28.5 for the building funds, but together, that's still our 30, right? So, and that gives us a little bit more in the capital project levy.
Doesn't help the boiler.
It doesn't.
So.
But does it not help parts of the CTE though? Does it?
I don't know that we will have enough for the CTE, because we go back, isn't 26 million and somehow it changed?
Yeah, so, how, how is my math working, our economics? When I add the 26, 2, and then I add the, the 2.3?
We get 28.
I get 28, and then you throw a million dollar.
Yeah, but you got to take off for that interest payment. It starts at 29, but then you got to take off for the interest payment, because we're going out late, so we got to build in for the interest payment, which brings it down to the 26.
Yeah, this is starting, what she was here, starts at 28.5, that is the second one, right? And then we get down to the initial deposit, is the 26, so that does, or, sorry, total uses is 28, right?
No.
Or no, we got the 26.
You got to go back to that last page that Sue asked about.
Yeah, that's what I was looking at, so what am I looking at?
Yeah, so it brings us down, this is what we will have to work with. This is 26, 352. That's what we'll remember. Yeah, 28.5, yeah.
Yep. And that would be for just.
That would, that would, we would have about 150,000 left from this, from this CTE.
I see.
But then if you go up to 34, that brings it down to 31. So then you could do the boiler and something else.
Well, and you don't, we don't have to get up to 35. I mean, the board said, no, let's, let's take care of the boiler and the CTE, and let's do a million dollar tech levy, okay? That might get us to 31.
Right. I mean, that's what I personally lean towards, is the CTE and the boiler, because we cannot wait on the boiler, I don't, I think that would just be irresponsible of us as a board to say, yeah, we'll hold up on that, and then, no, there's no heat, did something, something happen.
Yeah, and we can certainly work in the other direction too, if you tell us the project cost that you want to cover, and tell the CTE, boiler, we'll work back and say this is the bond amount you need to cover.
But maybe we can't go as high as 1.5 or.
The tax impact is pretty high on that 1.5.
No, that's what I'm saying, like, that's why maybe we shouldn't go as high as 1.5, we just stay at the one.
Would this be billed into one question or two?
I think.
This is too many. Yeah, there's five, there's generally five days each calendar year.
But you can go out, we don't have to wait like a year or?
I think looking at the number that it costs to, possibly, that it possibly costs to redo that building, that has to be a separate issue, that has to be its own thing. I don't think that we can.
I don't even know.
I think, yeah. Understand how to be. Stand up that type levy because. Understand that type levy, because even, I mean, even our farmers, and, you know, it's not like it's just in the city or ju, you know. I think that's a thing, and everybody, you need heat to live in this wonderful city.
That was new to. My boys were there. Resolved it in that many years, and so, and that is such an important growing need for them. In time. That building over there.
Eric, you ready? Just boiler.
Save again.
He's five hundred thousand.
So you're skeptical with that two point six, that whole number? Or what is that?
Two point three.
Two point three instead of three.
Before, then you go thirty-four, you lose everyone.
We're not gonna be able to do it at twenty-nine.
Twenty.
Could be twenty.
Shorted twenty-seven million.
No, twenty, because we gotta do the interest payment. Vera, if, say you get it down to twenty-five, but then you want to bump up, that's twenty-eight. So that is.
Bump up your boiler.
Yeah.
To three point five, and you gotta.
Enough, and, I'm so sorry.
Project's gonna cost way more than two point three.
It's gonna cost three point five instead of two point three.
There's always, always unforeseen circumstances in those. Guaranteed. For a baby, man.
And they wouldn't have taken that into consideration?
Well, they would've, but it always costs more. Like, the cheapest construction worker you can find is billed at a hundred and eighty dollars an hour right now. So it's.
This is true.
There's always unforeseen circumstances in projects like that.
And here's another thing for both the CTE and the boiler is, you know, we're not gonna sell this tomorrow and be building the next day. We're gonna have another.
Couple of years.
Couple of years of.
Inflation.
Inflation on top of it.
Yeah, and taking where this boiler is sitting in the building, like, it's not a very easy project.
I know that in that previous referendum that we had, and some of the design, limited design they came up with, is they had, they put, they put the building in a, or the boiler in a whole new location. Like a boiler plant.
Yeah, they make them a little bit more accessible now, so that, well, and if you want to think about it originally, that was an accessible location.
It was originally.
But since we've built around that building so many times, it's not really accessible anymore.
And I'm sure they've built in construction inflation because they know what the schedule would be, whether it's sufficient or not. I mean, that's anybody's best guess, right? But.
It's just a guess.
Yeah, they do their best, I think, to, you know, knowing, they know what the schedule is expected to be, and they account for the construction inflation at some level.
Maybe we'll get lucky and go off the board at a, during recession. I mean, you're lucky, you get a little cost. Right?
Sure. Yeah, well, I mean, regardless, I.
Then the change order eats it up.
I will, uh, I will get, I will get some information for the board on that boiler dollar amount, how they came up with that. What contingency dollars they put in, and all of that, just so you're aware.
You know, whatever we do, I just don't think we can go over the twenty-nine million dollar mark. Like, as soon as we get that three on the front of it as a thirty, it's, it's not, I don't think it's gonna be pretty.
Can we do the twenty-nine, nine, nine, like we did for the primary?
Yeah, so we did.
That's true.
Worked.
What do you think about the tech levy, Eric?
I like the tech levy, I think it's a great idea. I mean, you could leave the, you could leave the whole CTE addition at whatever the twenty-six million or whatever it is, and then you just make cuts throughout the construction process. Like, you just eliminate this cabinet or that cabinet, and it all adds up. Sue, you ready to go?
Well, I always take time to think about, and now Eric's thrown in another unky wrench there. Um, I'm, I feel like we have a history in this district of cutting back and cutting back and cutting back, and then ending up with something that's not what we needed. And I think, I think there are examples in the primary school, I think there are examples in middle school, I mean, I think we can go certainly in a high school. So I, I personally am not willing to cut back the tech levy or the, the CTE addition. If that's all we do, to do it right this time, then that's what we do.
Yeah, but.
And if the boiler, then the community.
CTE, it's without a, without heat in the building, and kids are all of a sudden learning now.
Well, okay, so what if that happens tomorrow?
Right.
What would we do?
We, we're going to have to, to fix them. And we could put millions into fixing it, depending on what kind of failure you have. Now, we don't have just one boiler, you know, it's a boilers. We can run the high school on one boiler, but both boilers are nineteen sixty-four.
Do we know how much we have spent, like, in the last five years, let's say, of maintenance?
Well, this year was the year that we had the cracks, and we rebuilt the floor in one of them. So it was kind of nasty. Um, we did a boiler project at the intermediate school, you know, a few years ago with LTFM. And here's the other thing. We could put a dollar amount, and we could look at LTFM for the rest of it. We wouldn't have to get the whole thing out of.
Use a couple pots to pay for it.
Yes, to pay for it.
You have, you do have the flexibility with the boiler. I mean, we could, we could, you could use three pots, you could use some capital, an LTFM, and, you know, whatever we think we can get from the bond.
So maybe we just put, excuse me, so maybe we just put a cap on what we can.
Twenty-nine, nine, nine.
Yeah, twenty-nine, nine, 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 and then whatever the CTE is, the rest goes to the.
Can we ask for two, do the twenty-nine, nine, 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 and then back out the interest? But then can you do one with the boiler and one with the current CTE? And then build it so we can see the differences between those two plans? What really is gonna be the different tax impact between the two? So we can really compare, you know, because if it's not gonna be that much difference, let's really look at this and make sure we are doing this right before. We got some time, we got November to review this. Let's, Jody said you can do that. Let's get those numbers, if that's okay with everyone.
Yeah, it sounds like we all kind of agree on the, just one million as the type levy.
I'm not understanding what you want to.
So have Jody back out, do twenty-nine, nine, nine, nine million, back out what we need to do for interest.
And have a million-dollar tech levy in it.
And that's our pot. But then take the current amount for the CTE, that's the twenty-six, seven, twenty-nine, and put it up to three million for Eric to cover that, because he thinks it's gonna be. Then back out the interest, and then our tax levy on top of that. And so we can compare those two, because it's gonna only be a couple million dollars between the two. What is the true tax impact? It's gonna go to like thirty-one, but really, what is that little tax impact? We need to really look and hone in, what is that gonna be? I mean, if it's only two or three dollars, I think, yes, we don't want to go over that into that thirty, but if it's only two or three dollars, I think we need to give that some serious thought.
And it is hard because I feel like we can look at it as a whole thing and say, okay, your taxes are only going, it's like, you know, the difference of two dollars a year or whatever, but people still just see that big number. So part of that's gonna be, you know, our public engagement issues of, you know, yeah, that's the big number, but.
But then at the same time, we also got the new buildings going up in the countries, helping down that tax base too. So we gotta look at that at peace as well. We're going to have more revenue coming in because building is happening, even with all these high prices.
And this is where I'd like this, I mean, I don't know where the thirty, twenty-nine, but why that's the magic number.
Was what was on that table?
Yeah, and that was, I look at it like it's a matter of perspective, right? When I was a kid, if somebody in our town had a house that was a hundred thousand dollar house, they were like, they were millionaires. That was, that was a mansion, okay? Now, find me a hundred thousand dollar house. You know, it's like, but that's kind of the, the tricky thing, is that if, if you look at it logically and rationally, you understand that, yes, everything has gone up, but there is a segment of the population that still probably think that a, that a hundred thousand dollar house is a mansion. And I think nobody could even fathom Eric saying you can't get, get somebody to, you know, mechanic or someone in construction for less than a hundred, eighty dollars an hour. Like, I don't know that people realize that, right?
I don't think that twenty-nine, nine, nine, I think that's a, that's an item that was, or a number that was, when a primary school was built. I don't, I don't know that that's in, I think it just has to be under four. I don't, if it's, if it's in the thirty million, especially under thirty-five, I don't see that as a red flag.
Jody, have they talked about indoor air quality at all for the boiler? Has that ever been a discussion? For what, like, doing indoor air quality for the boiler separately?
Separate fund, that'll just do the same tax impact though.
Right, but not owner.
Yeah. Yeah, what's that? Will your boilers qualify though for indoor?
I have to ask.
I think it would have to be in your deferred maintenance money, I don't know that Sarah, MBE, will approve it.
That's what I was wondering if they were responsible.
Boilers are usually, have to come from your per pupil funding, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think that does anything for your CFMs in your rooms.
Right.
And I want, I want to go back to the, to the comments about, you know, we could potentially use long-term facility maintenance and capital dollars to offset the boiler. That is true. But we, but we also have to remember, we have a huge amount of other, like, issues in the district that we, that we have needs as well. So if we take all of that money, we put it into pay for the rest of the boiler, we're not gonna have money to do all the other stuff that we are gonna have to do. So.
It feels like to get what we went on, we're gonna have to go, you know, to thirty, or whatever, but it's just gonna be, I shouldn't say selling it, but just like expl, trying to explain to as many people as possible, yeah, that's a big number, but it's this much, come on, you know?
Well, it's not, it's not fifty-four million plus fourteen million. I mean, we did hear them say that we're, you know, we can't support that. I do worry that the activities phase, which didn't come out and vote yes last time, but we'll look at this and go, there's nothing in here for my kid.
Only education.
Education, he, well, but.
Right, I know what you're saying. I know what you're saying.
I mean, I think we're already, there, that already is a bit of a liability. But you have, if we're gonna phase it, then you have to do something, but.
We just have to be clear.
I feel like everyone had their opportunity to voice their thoughts, which is, that's a good thing. And we know that we don't need to decide until December if we're gonna do it. If, if, and I do believe that if we wanted to do a, a vote in May, that we would have to vote here in January. So I think there's a difference between.
So December would be April, and then January would be May?
Yes, I believe so.
So I've got that tiny schedule here. Yeah, so the UCRL requires submitting the review and comment by early December, but actually adopting the resolution by January twenty-sixth. And then a May election requires you to submit the review and comment by January fifth, MBE, but the, technically, then the formal resolution gets adopted by March first.
So, so technically, we even have more flexibility? But if we're gonna submit a review and comment, we have to kind of know.
Yeah.
I mean, we, so we move forward with that, but the board doesn't take a formal resolution action until we have more time to do that. And I actually, I think the last time we did a, did a bond referendum, that's how we did it, too, we, we submitted the review and comment, and then we had the resolution a week or two after that.
The board does take action on submission of the review and comment, but that's just a simple motion, so. And so will we, the numbers that I'm asking for, or will you just send that in an email or something? Yeah, we'll send those to Michelle and Ben and.
Do you kind of understand what you meant by that?
I totally follow.
Okay, so it'd be two, two scenarios.
And we, you know, we've got everything set up, so if there's other information that's helpful to you guys as you are thinking about this, don't hesitate to ask for that now or file your request through and look at them.
So that this interest payment that needs some of our available, we would have to go out in when, so that we didn't have to pay that?
So if you have an August election or a November election, then you, I mean, you're still gonna pay the interest on the bonds. It's just not part of the bond amount, not part of the bond proceeds, but it's still gonna be collected from your taxpayers, it'll still be part of the tax impact. It's just that we have to make sure that you're gonna have the money to make that payment, so it just has to be accounted for as part of the bond proceeds. So it's not, you're gonna get rid of paying interest on the bonds, it's just.
It's just when you pay it.
Yeah, when you pay it, and if you, you know, if it needs to be figured into the amount of the bond proceeds. So I don't want you to think it's a negative or a way to get by with not paying it or anything, if you have your election at a different time. You want to have your. You wanna have your election at the time that makes sense, right? We just need to be cognizant of the fact that the, that payment will need to be made from your bond proceeds.
Well, I'm gonna take, I'm, I'm happy with how this discussion's gone, because although there's, you know, not everybody's 100%, you know, in the same place, we have, we have some direction on some things. Like, one is, we know that we, when we run these, these calculations, it's probably gonna be the $1 million tax levy, or the tech levy not to 1.5, right? And we have things narrowed down to the CTE and the boiler. And then we have two simulations that Ellers will run for us, so we see that what the tax impact will be. I'll get some more information on the boiler, you know, and how those numbers will put together. And then I'll, you know, Eric can kinda look at that too, and we get his expertise on it. And then, again, if anybody has additional questions, you just gotta call, email, and we'll get to that information, and we'll send it to you. We only have one board meeting in November and one in December, so although we have two months, we don't have as many board meetings. If needed, we always could call a special meeting, but we, you know, hopefully, we won't have to do that.
So ideally, we would kind of have our last of our questions in the November meeting. Not the last of our, but like, narrow it down to what we all agree on. November, and then December would be on the agenda to go send it to...
Because I don't know if any of you, if you all remember, like, what the review and comment looks like, but, I mean, you're talking many, many pages of information that needs to be prepared to send to the Department of Education. So that's where, you know, we will need to have some time to put that together.
Thanks, please.
I think we need to just get a little bit closer in November, with the idea that in December, we really are close. Or we don't.
I don't know if this is, I don't know if this is worth a question to Von about if there is some serious feelings about cutting back the CTE, what they would, what they could do with that. Not that I'm, I hate anything about that, but if, if that's the trend that we're talking here, then we might want to know what that means. All right, are there any other discussions? All right, we'll move on then to the action part of the meeting. We'll move on to 11A, the custodian's contract. Will someone make a motion to accept the 2325 custodian's contract as presented? Motion made by Deb, and second made by Don. Is there any further discussion on that contract? During that, we'll vote by roll call, starting with Eric.
Yes.
Sue, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. We now will move into refunding the bond resolution. If someone would like to read that resolution, then we can discuss it after the motion.
I move to accept the resolution relating to 12,510,000 General Obligation School Building Refunding Bond Series 2023B, authorizing the issuance, awarding sale, and prescribing the form and details of providing the payment thereof.
So motion made by Melissa, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Deb. Now, is there any discussion or questions on the refunding? I think Jody's gonna go through the pre-sale report with you, and you have hard copies, right?
Yeah.
'Cause we don't have that attached.
Oh, okay.
You have that.
All right, I will just quickly highlight a few things. If you have any questions at all, don't hesitate to let me know, but this is financing the refunding of your 2014, certain maturities for your 2014 A bonds. We did go through the rating process, and they did assign the AA1 under the state credit enhancement program, as always, and then affirmed your AA3 rating, which is great news. So that's a nice, high rating, helps you to attract more bidders and lower interest rates. We've got seven bids, BOK Financial Securities from Milwaukee was the lower bidder, at 39982. And then you'll see in the notes at the bottom, it was a little bit higher. We were pretty close to the interest rate that we had assumed as part of the pre-sale report that we provided to you at your early October meeting. So just a little bit higher, so the future value savings is still a little over 500,000, which is great news for your taxpayers. And then, I will go through the attachments. So the first attachment is the bid tab, so all seven bids that you received. So you had a lot of demand for your bonds, interest from throughout the country. So BOK Financial Securities, this is on attachments page 1, it's labeled at the bottom. So their true interest rate at the 39982. The next bidder was TV Securities out of New York, at just a little over 4%. Then FHN Financial Capital Markets out of Memphis, Hilltop Securities from Dallas, Baker Group from Oklahoma City, and Baird from Milwaukee, Wisconsin, and then finally, Key Bank from Cleveland at a roughly 4.25% rate. The next series of schedules are the exact same schedules that were in our pre-sale reports. They're just updated now for sale results. So I will draw your attention to attachments page 6 at the bottom, and that's where it shows the net savings amount over the life of this new bond issue at $513,000 roughly. Page 7 is the escrow account, where the proceeds from the bonds will be placed until the call date. So we are scheduled to close on November 9. We locked in at an interest earnings rate of 5.58% this morning, so that's fantastic news. So we will earn just shy of $170,000 of interest in that escrow account, and we'll apply that toward the refunding when the call date happens on February 1st. And then, our detailed debt plan on page 8, I'll just point out the estimated refunding savings, because you levy at 105% of your required debt service interest and principal payments, the savings, the net savings over the life is closer to about 535,000. And then the updated chart, which you see a number of times, and this is the starting point then for the schedules that we prepared for you today on the different scenarios. So you can see how that looks now, very close to what we were expecting as, as part of the pre-sale. And then the last few pages are the press release that Moody's issued when they, when they affirmed their rating. And really, the report is pretty much identical to the report that they provided to you as part of the facilities maintenance bond process. But thanks to Michelle for all her work in getting the information that the rating agency needed, answering their questions, and going through that process. Again, there's extra, a lot of extra work involved in this, and we certainly appreciate everything that she did as part of the process.
Almost experts at it now.
Right, yes, exactly.
Thank you, Michelle.
Yes, and I should mention, I have Beth Downs with me tonight. She's our newest team member at Ellers. She most recently worked at Recorey Schools as their business manager, so she's got lots of experience working with school districts, and sat through all of the, everything that was happening with the sale results today, and going through all this information and all the different scenarios that you saw tonight, too.
Welcome aboard. Lots of miles on the vehicle, traveling the state, going to school board meetings.
Yeah, it's fun to see a different school board meeting than I was used to.
And thank you, Jody, and thank you, Ellers.
Yes, thank you. We appreciate everything you do. Appreciate the opportunity to serve you again, of course, and are really happy with how things turned out, so, it's good news. And we just have a form for you to sign after you take action. So I think we'll have Sue and probably Don sign, 'cause you're missing your...
All right, I already read my part. So there is a motion on the table. Is there any further discussion? During that, then we will vote by roll call, starting with Don.
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Sue, yes? Eric?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
We'll move on to 11C, health insurance bids, and I'll entertain a motion to accept the bids as presented. I don't wanna say Sourcewell bid. I move to accept the health insurance bid from Sourcewell as presented, thank you.
I moved that, so I, so moved, wow, okay, sorry, I was thinking about this.
Motion made by Melissa, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Don, is there any discussion?
So this was what the healthcare committee wanted to raise.
Let's see, do we have to roll call this one, too?
Sure.
Okay.
Roll alert.
All right. Yes, you do. To a vote by roll call. Starting with Sue, yes. Melissa?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
This will go.
Motion carries. There were no additions to the agenda. The meetings are listed below, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Still moved. Is there a second? Second by Don, we are adjourned.